Here.
Would you, I can't read the names so many.
Brian Stevens.
I'm here.
Dennis Hund.
Here.
Donald Holman.
Here.
Bill Wall, not here, Sam Maxwell.
Here.
Ken Bateman.
Here.
Sherry Hansen, here.
Here, okay, good deal. All right, we have no old business, the new business, the first thing up is fifteen twelve South Second Street.
Do you want to take a second for the minutes?
Oh.
So, we actually do have an update for you on the minutes, they were accidentally left out of the package.
Yeah, well, I don't have that on my cheat sheet.
So, if you guys want, we can vote on these minutes at our next meeting, or if you want to take a minute to look at them now, you can do that, it's up to you.
We could look at it. Well, I think, I, well.
You want to look at them now?
Everybody got the advanced packet, right, did everybody review it?
Yeah.
Okay, well, then I would make a motion that we approve the minutes from the last meeting.
I'll second.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Uh-huh.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes.
On to new business. Michelle.
I think the next step would be.
Do I have approval for, do I have approval, a motion to approve last, last September eighth minutes?
Yes, I just made.
Oh, we're just going to review them now?
We already reviewed them because everybody got the packet in advance.
Okay.
Well, that's what we're there, we were saying is they were left out of the packet.
Yeah, okay. All right, now we can go to fifteen twelve South Second.
All right, perfect.
Would you give us a rundown, please?
Sure. Okay, so, on this one, this is for a request for a special use permit to allow automobile sales in the I dash one district, which is like industrial district. So, the applicant is requesting a special use for automobile sales. Automobile sales are allowed in the I one with issuance of a special use permit. The property here is the old, you can see it on the map, is the old aluminum recycling center, and it's supported by industrial commercial uses. There's a storage facility located to the north and west. So, here's the property here, to the north and west. Geiger Ready Mix and Drexel Chemical Company are to the east, and the former Aprils Field, and a vacant city-owned property is located to the south. Per the Development Regulations, required parking rate for automobile sales is calculated as one for four square feet of the building area, which is only accessible to the public, plus one for three thousand square feet of sales lot, and then also plus one for each employee, which totals seven. The applicant has submitted a parking lot site plan for nine total parking stalls, which does exceed the minimum requirement, which is seven. The proposed parking spaces. He has a kind of, here's his site plan for the proposed parking. He actually already has done the parking, I will add that, it's, he's already resurfaced it, yeah, and it's striped. He's got, like I said, ample parking there, so, the east, to the east of the property, there's five spaces, and that's going to be used for employee customer parking. To the north, there's four spaces, and that's going to be for his inventory. And then to the south, that's just going to be kind of overflow parking for vehicles that are not, they haven't been prepped yet for sale. So, the, the commission may recommend issuance of a special use permit whenever it finds that. One, the proposed special use complies with all applicable provisions of this ordinance. Staff believes that this application complies with all provisions of the City of Luthmore Development Regulations. The proposed special use at the specified location will contribute to and promote economic development, welfare, or convenience of the public. The proposed special use to allow automobile sales will contribute to the economic vitality of Luthmore by allowing for the operation of a revenue-generated business in this space. Number three, the special use will not cause substantial injury to the value of other property in the neighborhood. Staff does not believe that the proposed use will cause substantial injury to the value of other, of other property in the neighborhood which is located. Number four, the location, size of the special use, the nature, intensity of the operation involved in or conducted in connection with it, and the location of the site with respect to streets giving access to it, or such that special use, that the special use will not dominate the needed neighborhood, so as to prevent development and use of the neighborhood property in accordance with the applicable zoning district regulations. So, no new structures or buildings are being proposed. Like I said, the parking site plan is already, it's, it's already been approved, it's already done, so there's ample off-street parking. Applicant originally purchased the property for heavy vehicle sales, and that is a permitted use in the zoning district. The proposed use of automobile sales is considered less intense than the permitted use, and therefore will not dominate the neighborhood. So, notification was sent to property owners within two hundred feet of the subject property, and staff received no comments or inquiries. Staff does recommend approval of the special use permit request based on analysis and findings completed herein, subject to the following conditions. The only condition we have is that the special use be, shall be renewed annually to the city clerk's office. And if you have any questions, staff can answer, and the applicant is here as well.
Any questions or comments? Ladies and gentlemen.
Do you guys want to make any comment to it?
I move we.
This is the public hearing, so we do have to open the public hearing.
Okay.
Let's open the public hearing.
And if there's no.
If there's no, any questions by the board? Any comments by the applicants or comments? I need a motion to either, to approve.
You have to close the public hearing.
I move we close the public hearing.
Close the public.
Yeah, I forget all that. Do I need to vote for that to close the public hearing? No, okay, so close, okay. Now I need a recommendation to the board, whether to approve, disapprove, or whatever.
I move we approve the special use permit for fifteen twelve South Second Street.
I second.
I will second, my.
We'll duke it out.
Okay, by the duke out team there.
Rock, paper, scissors. All right, who, who won that?
Sam.
Sam. It doesn't matter.
Okay, somebody stated, so it's for the record, who.
Sam can have it.
Well, now, Sarah.
I'll second.
Give it to Ken, give it to Ken.
So, Sam first, Ken second?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side? Motion passes. They didn't even give me the gamble, you know, wow, I get one of them. What kind of deal is that?
Yes, Sarah.
Thank you very much.
Did you have the dates written for the city commission for this one?
So, I'll just make a note for the applicant that this will go to city commission as well for final approval, so what we did tonight is recommendation to city commission. And that'll be October twentieth for first consideration, and then the following.
October twenty eighth.
October twenty eighth, excuse me, and then the following meeting for second consideration, so.
Thank you very much for coming.
Good luck to you.
Yeah.
Appreciate it, ma'am.
I think, I think it's a good idea.
Absolutely.
Okay, let's.
That'll be that.
Go to eighteen, eight thirteen Kickoo. Would you give us?
Staff report.
Give us the highlights of this.
Here.
I don't know what happened.
You'll say.
I don't know.
What happened?
Don't be doing it.
Just wants to do a yes for the game, you know.
Too hard. Yes, that's right.
Are we going to watch the Chiefs, sir?
No, I know, they don't give me a gamble.
That, that's one of the reasons.
They don't give you a gamble.
Yeah, they don't give me the gamble.
That's one of the reasons.
Well, we might not have that, because.
I cannot perform my function.
And I think the HDMI is going bad. Is there, can you wirelessly connect?
I don't know.
Let me try, what we did last time. Sorry, guys, just a second.
Can I start her?
Yeah, you can start.
They already had it tuned into the Chiefs game.
So, we're going ahead and, when she's messing with that, see if she can get it up.
You want to see the pictures?
I saw it.
So, on this one, this is case twenty twenty five S dash seventeen SUP. So, the applicant on this one has requested a special use permit to allow home occupation that is not conducted entirely within the principal dwelling unit. The subject property is zone R one dash six with existing family home. The property is surrounded by other single-family homes of similar size and nature.
We'll have to pull it over there, though, so it'll be an extended screen, I think.
Applicant's proposed, proposed use requires an SUP because the essential components of the home occupation will occur outside of the principal dwelling. So, section four point oh four B six G of the Department of Development Regulations mandates that a home occupation be conducted entirely, entirely within the principal residential building unless the special use permit is issued. Applicant is proposing to use the combined lots. Okay, so here's eight thirteen Kickoo, and eight eleven, she owns both. So, she is proposing to use the combined lot for the exterior cultivation of flowers. This operation involves transplanting seedlings into six designated in-ground flower beds. From February to October every year, sales will occur off-site at local farmers' markets and online. As one of the conditions for home occupations, you cannot do retail, you cannot hold inventory for retail or those stuff. So, staff confirms that the, that the accessory use will be located on the same lot as the principal residence, satisfying the requirement of section four point oh four B two D, which states that accessory uses are a structure or use which is located on the same lot as the principal building for principal use served. So, applicant initially owned two adjacent lots, like I said, the primary is on eight thirteen, the primary residence is on eight thirteen Kickoo, and then the vacant lot to the east, which is eight eleven Kickoo. On August twentieth, she submitted an application for a lot combination, which has been approved and recorded, and staff has received two copies of that reported lot combination. So, Sam, please speak. So, right here, it's showing two different parcels.
Yeah.
Because it was just, we just received it last week, this different survey.
So, GIS, we haven't GIS'd it yet, or got the update on it.
Yeah, so we're waiting for the county to do it, and then it'll show up.
And then it'll be eight thirteen.
They are one, it is one parcel now.
Is it going to be all eight thirteen, or eight eleven?
It'll be all eight thirteen.
Okay.
Yep, yep. So, so the, the commission may recommend issuance of a special use permit whenever it finds that. Number one, the proposed special use complies with all applicable provisions of this ordinance. So, the certificate of survey for the lot combination has been reported, and two copies have been provided to staff. Staff confirms there's ample room for parking off the rear alley, and staff is currently working with the applicant on the submitted off-street site plan. So, I don't forget, another requirement for home occupations is that they have to have off-street parking. This right here, oh, how do I have, how do I have to do this?
You have to do, you have to look up there. It's basically a screen extension. Oh, drag, drag it this way.
I'm going to say where it is.
I can't. Towards you.
Yeah, drag it off to this side, and it should show up there. There you go. Maybe try to get a little further before you let go. Let me try.
I want that one.
There you go. Why is it disappearing? Okay, well.
So, in your packet, if you look.
Yeah.
Sorry, guys.
It's this one here where it has the blue box. So, this is the parking site plan that she has submitted. This right here is not permitted, I've already responded to her, and we're.
Who's she at?
Oh, there you are. We are currently working on that, but there is ample parking back there, and she can have, it could be a gravel, because it's coming off the rear alley. It can be a gravel parking area, it just needs to be contained with a board, so we've already discussed this. I think she's in the process of working on that, so the only reason that was not included as one of the, one of the conditions, is because it is a requirement for the home occupation anyways. So, now they confuse you all. Number two, the proposed special use at the specified location will contribute to and promote economic development, welfare, convenience of the public. Staff believes that cultivating cut flowers in a residential setting can promote economic development through local sales, enhance public welfare by providing beauty in the neighborhood, and increase convenience by offering readily available fresh cut blooms. Number three, the special use will not cause substantial injury to the value of the, of other property in the neighborhood. The cut flowers will be cultivated using in-ground flower beds that shall be well-maintained and are located twenty-one feet from the property line, from the front property line. Excuse me, a home occupation requires two off-street parking spaces to prevent use of public on-street parking, which we've already discussed. Staff does not believe that operation of a small-scale flower business will cause substantial injury to the value of other property in the neighborhood. Number four, I'm not going to read all that again. Staff's comments are no new structures or buildings are proposed as part of this special use permit. The operation is a small-scale home, home-based flower business. Big ground beds are located, and this is forty-one feet from the street, so the twenty-one feet was from the property line, which are the red lines. Here, twenty-one feet from here are forty-one feet from the street, so it's, it's set back quite a bit, which will minimize the visibility and impact, and the property will continue to function as just a residential structure. The notifications were sent to, to the property owners within two hundred feet of the subject property, and staff received no comments or inquiries. Again, staff does recommend approval of the special use permit, subject to the condition that the special use permit be renewed on an annual basis to the city clerk's office. If you have any questions, staff can answer, and the applicant is here as well.
Anybody have any questions?
I, I just have a, just a question for my own. If, if there was a driveway that was attached to the, to the house, would that satisfy the one parking, or the two parking, or whatever? Does it have to be separate?
I believe it has to be separate, because otherwise she's taking away, mm.
That's a good question.
The way that I read the code is that you have to meet just the minimum for the home occupation. Unless the other one is higher, so if you had a duplex, and you had to have four spaces for your duplex, we would go with the higher amount, rather than stacking them on top of each other, because that's the intent of that section of the code related to the home occupation, is to make sure that there's enough parking to support the home occupation use and the living use, because it is accessory.
Okay.
So.
That's a dish.
I have a. So, the flowers will be, be sold at the property?
No. No, because that would, that would be considered retail, and she can't have retail.
That was my, that was my question.
So, it'll be sold at the farmer's market?
So, they'll cultivate.
So, she can do online sales, too.
Yeah, so that's why you needed two parking spaces, there's no?
It's, it's required.
Okay, but they have off-street parking there anyway, right? In front of the house, as I saw.
That would be, that would be on-street parking, because it's near the house.
Yeah, okay. I saw that the beds were already laid out.
You do not have a driveway leading to that.
I had already laid the weed barrier, so.
Yeah, I saw that today, yeah. Okay.
Wanted to take advantage of the water.
There you go. Anybody else have any questions?
That whole blue thing, is there driveway, that blue block?
Proposed, yeah.
It's, it's a proposed.
Yeah, it connects with that alley, correct?
Well, it's not showing the connection there, and so it does need to come back to the alley, and it can be a maximum thirty-seven feet from the, that rear property line. So, she will have to pull it towards the valley.
It's not going to create any problems with runoff to the neighbor?
It, it'll be gravel.
Okay, so it's pervious, so we're, okay, we're fine.
And this is also a public hearing item, so we'll leave that open on public hearing for comments? Yep.
It'd be you.
What?
Open up public hearing.
Yes, I'm sorry, we opened up for public hearing. Any comments by the applicant?
No, thank you.
Okay. Any more comments by the board to ask the applicant?
Are you looking at me?
Oh, because you're the one usually talks up all the time.
I think it's a lovely idea.
I do, too, I, I wish you the best of luck with it. I will close the.
Oh, I guess.
I'm sorry.
Do we want to put any restrictions on this, that we limit to what can be grown, to what has been put in here?
So, in the application, she did submit.
Give it.
And some are.
Things could change, right?
Well, this is what she submitted, so this is what we're going by. If, yes, if you want to put a restriction that she cannot put sunflowers that could grow up to, some sunflowers could get up to, I mean, fifteen plus feet.
Okay.
And like one or two.
But these, these would be contingent on the special use permit, so like, her special use permit is basically saying, these are the things you can grow.
And the placement of them.
Correct, right.
That's how.
So, we don't have to be the government and get involved in.
You're worried about pot, weren't you?
Well, I'm just thinking for myself.
I think that's a different permit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's not going to pass here right now.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, so actually.
Coming over the top.
When, when, when Katrina and I had, when we were communicating about this, you know, I did ask her to kind of lay this out, and I think she did a great job.
Yes, I did.
Showing where each bed's going to be, she numbered them, and then it coincides with what's going to be grown there, because one of our concerns was how close is it going to be, and are you going to have these huge flowers right by the street?
Sure.
Where it could cause, you know.
I'm just saying that the list that she has given would be incorporated by reference to the special use permit, so we don't have to necessarily dictate on these sort of things, is that correct?
Everything will be listed in there specifically.
Yeah, so this packet will be what we can reference if, for example, you notice something is growing, and you think, hey, we weren't aware that this crazy plant, stinky plant, or whatever, I don't know, jackfruit, was growing. Then we can look back and say, okay, well, that wasn't on this list that you had provided to us. So, we think this could, because of the impact it's having, we think this could be enough for you to.
To violate the special use permit.
Yeah, for reapproval.
I just want to make sure we're taking care of everybody downwind of this.
Yeah.
But if she wants to update it, she can, correct?
The, the high best.
What was that?
If she wants to update it later, she can, like, growing other things.
Yeah, if she's like, hollyhock ain't selling, I need to get something else.
Well, they.
Unless, unless you guys want to put really strict restrictions on it, I think you could leave that to be something open to staff. If she wants to change it, she can.
I like that idea.
I like that idea. Be a good person.
Because now, the highest one she's got is a red leaf, I guess it could get up to eight feet, but.
Well, she has something out there.
Are we closing the public hearing? Has it been closed?
Not yet. I don't think we.
But she put, they will harvest it before reaching six feet, the red leaf, I guess.
And again, remember, it's going to be forty-one feet fat.
Yeah, so there's plenty of room to grow whatever.
Sunflowers up to.
Not whatever.
I mean, the listed items.
What you want.
Don't put that on the record.
The listed items on.
You're getting silly, guys.
With staff.
I think we could probably go ahead and close the public hearing.
Yeah.
Yes, we can close. I have a motion to close the public hearing.
I second it.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Do I have a motion to pass the?
I move to recommend to the city commission approval as written.
I second it.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion passes.
It's on.
So, again, just, so you guys are where the applicant's aware, it will go to the city commission, October twenty eighth for first consideration. Second consideration is the end of November, right, because the holiday?
Yeah.
Twenty-fifth?
Mm-hmm.
Twenty-fifth of November. You do not need to attend.
And, and your growing season is from February to October, is that right? Or, February to October?
And even the last process, yeah.
Okay.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good luck. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Other business?
Fun stuff, right?
Pardon?
Fun stuff, right?
Well, it's my opinion that, I don't know if we need to do this or not, but that's, I have a motion either to bring it. Anybody have a motion to bring this up, or not bring this up?
Well, let me start with a little recap, if I may.
Sure.
And so what this item is about, and I'm going to ask you to withhold from voting on this item, because it does relate directly to you. So, the reason we have this item on here is because the planning commission bylaws do state that if a planning commissioner misses more than three meetings within any twelve-month period, and that's a rolling twelve-month period, so it's not calendar year, the board must vote on whether to recommend removal of that planning commissioner to the city commission. So, that's why we are here tonight, and as you can see in this policy report that was prepared for you, Ms. Hanson's attendance record is in there. There have been four absences within that rolling twelve-month period, which include November twenty twenty-four, December twenty twenty-four, February twenty twenty-five, and September twenty twenty-five. Staff does not have a recommendation on this item, but we'll leave it open to you to discuss and make a motion according to one of the actions or options that you see at the bottom of the policy report, as you see fit.
Is there a public hearing that's opened?
There is not a public hearing.
Okay. Do I get to talk at all?
Yeah, sure.
May I?
Oh, absolutely, yes.
Absolutely.
First and foremost, I think sitting on this commission has been an honor for me, and I take it very, very serious. I also have a career, and it's a pretty in-depth career. I'm a regional manager over several people, and have to cover for them when things happen, and so sometimes that happens. Since this last episode in September, they addressed me by email. I didn't know it was this sensitive, and since then, I've put things in place at my work, so I won't be missing any meetings. So, moving forward, I just hope that you, you know, think in favor of me, because I've been on this city planning for a while, and it's dear to my heart, so. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions for Sharon?
I, I do have a question, not for you. But say we have another one of these in November, and Ms. Hanson was not to show up, that would be another absence in the twelve months, would we have to revisit this again?
I would say yes, according to what the bylaws say.
When was the last, when was the first of the four?
The first of the four was November twenty twenty-four, and then December and February, and actually, we should have done this back in February, but we just got a little bit read up on our bylaws and just came to our attention.
It's not been as strict as it has been now, just, I've been around for nine years, and it's never been this way.
Yeah, so the reason we got into looking at our bylaws and the, the email that you all received from me is because we had a meeting last month where we almost didn't have a quorum after we had several people either say they were going to be here and then not come, or several people just weren't able to come. So, we had the applicant here, we had a few people in the crowd, and we were almost not able to have the meeting, so that's why now it's, it's a little bit of a pressing matter.
But, and last month, I did email and say, do you guys have quorum? And I was told yes, so I kind of let my foot off the gas.
We did.
And I was between a patient, a patient dying, or coming here, and so I chose the patient.
And if one had a family member pass away.
Yeah, so, you know, things happen.
Yep.
Yeah. But it's not for lack of communication on my part, just knowing.
Yeah.
Anybody else have any comments?
Well, I'd like to make a motion to not make a recommendation under replacement of a planning commissioner to the city commission.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and second and.
You got it, Don.
Yeah, I know. So.
It's a tongue twister, I know.
Brian's a tongue twister, no, I have a motion by Ken and a second by Brian, all those in favor? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion passes.
Thank you, gentlemen. Sorry to put you through that.
Now I have a.
I had so fun.
Do I have a motion that we may adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
I second.
Okay, I got first and a second for adjourn.
Go Chiefs.
Alright.
And, and let me be an example for you all.
I know one time they had to call me, and I came, I was out working in the yard, and I came in.
Oh, yeah.